Hello, everyone. This public meeting of the Board of Education's Teaching, Learning, and Enrollment Committee for October 9th, 2025 is called to order. Good afternoon and welcome. Thank you all for being here. Today's agenda is an overview of special education services here at PPS. Like many, this is a topic that is near and dear to me. So we'll begin with introductions. I am Rochelle Chase Miller. I'm the Director for Zone 4, and I chair this committee. And want to go around and introduce ourselves?
Virginia LaForte, I'm the Director out of Zone 5, Northeast Portland.
I'm Kristy Split. I represent Zone 1, which is Southwest Portland.
Eddie Wong, Board Chair, Ex-Officio of this committee. Zones, we're doing zones, huh? Zone 7.
Hi, I'm Christina Howard. I'm the Senior Chief of Academics. I'm the staff liaison to the committee.
I'm sorry, I'm Jay Buno, I'm the Chief of Student Services. Sorry.
Good evening. I am Kelly Charles. I am Senior Director of Special Education.
Thanks, everybody. It's good to see everyone here. Next, we have public comment. Kara, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do. I'm going to call all four of the commenters up, and then they can provide their comment. Jocelyn, Haley Cambier, Trito, Sarah Schultz, and Suzanne Carson.
Hi, folks. Thanks for being here. Please make sure when you begin your comments that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have two minutes to speak. We ask that once you hear the sound of the alarm go off, please wrap up your comments. Um, no.
The teacher is overwhelmed to the point of tears, and students are showing signs of distress, including physical illness. VDLI is a critical educational service that ensures access and equity for Vietnamese-speaking students, many of whom begin school with limited English proficiency. Vietnamese is the third most commonly spoken language in Oregon and the second most common among residents with limited English proficiency. PPS's racial equity and social justice policy and multilingual education policy explicitly require the district to allocate resources and staffing to meet the needs of linguistically diverse students. Importantly, the VDLI program is not only for Vietnamese-speaking students. It also serves English-speaking students who wish to become bilingual, biliterate, and bicultural. Undermining VDLI harms both groups of students and contradicts PPS's stated goals of equitable access to multilingual education. We are deeply concerned by recent district actions that have closed enrollment for VDLI's first-grade class despite the district's longstanding commitment to maintaining 52 VDLI spots per grade level. This artificial cap appears designed to avoid hiring additional staff and to remain just under the Portland Association of Teachers' contractual threshold for split classes, rather than responding to program needs. Such actions perpetuate inequity. The district's failure to assign an additional full-time teacher has direct implications for PPS's ability to meet its own School Continuous Improvement Plan goals. Vietnamese-speaking students and their families are being systematically marginalized by staffing and policy decisions that would not be tolerated in other programs or schools. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Trito. I'm also a VDLI parent of a first grader and sixth grader. My comments are going to be in Vietnamese. Hiện nay có một khó khăn về nhân sự ở lớp 1. Chương trình song ngữ tiếng Việt tại trường tiểu học Silver City Park. Tình trạng này không chỉ không đáp ứng các tiêu chuẩn giảng dạy và hỗ trợ học sinh, mà còn vi phạm rõ ràng chính sách công bằng chủ tịch và cam kết giáo dục đa ngôn ngữ của PPS. Hiện tại, một giáo viên chịu trách nhiệm giảng dạy hoàn toàn cho 31 học sinh lớp 1 theo mô hình song ngữ 50-50, giảng dạy bằng cả tiếng Việt và tiếng Anh. Giáo viên này mới vào nghề chưa được lâu và chưa được đào tạo về chuyên môn tiếng Anh. Tiêu chuẩn cho lớp mẫu giá đến lớp 3, chất lượng giảng dạy bị ảnh hưởng. Giáo viên bị quá tải đến mức phát khóc, và học sinh có biểu hiện căng thẳng, bao gồm cả bệnh. VDLI là một chương trình giáo dục quan trọng đảm bảo quyền tiếp cận và công bằng cho học sinh nói tiếng Việt. Nhiều em bắt đầu đi học với trình độ tiếng Anh hạn chế. Tiếng Việt là ngôn ngữ được sử dụng phổ biến thứ 3 tại Oregon và ngôn ngữ phổ biến thứ 2 trong số những cư dân có trình độ tiếng Anh hạn chế. Chính sách công bằng chủ tịch và công lý xã hội và chính sách giáo dục đa ngôn ngữ của PPS yêu cầu học khu phân bổ nguồn lực và nhân sự để đáp ứng nhu cầu của học sinh đa ngôn ngữ. Điều quan trọng là chương trình VDLI không chỉ dành cho học sinh nói tiếng Việt. Chương trình còn phục vụ như học sinh nói tiếng Anh mong muốn trở thành người song ngữ, biết đọc, viết, viết và âm hiểu hai nền văn hóa. Việc làm suy yếu VDLI sẽ gây hại cho cả hai nhóm học sinh và đi ngược lại các mục tiêu đã nêu của PPS về tiếp cận công bằng với giáo dục đa ngôn ngữ. Chúng tôi vô cùng lo ngại với các hành động gần đây của học khu, trong đó có việc đóng cửa tuyển sinh lớp 1 của VDLI, bất chấp cam kết lâu dài của học khu và việc duy trì 52 chỗ cho mỗi khối lớp. Với hạn này dường như được nêu ra để tránh tuyển thêm nhân viên và duy trì ở mức dưới ngưỡng hợp đồng của Công đoàn Giáo viên Portland PAT, dành cho các lớp học chia nhỏ thay vì đáp ứng nhu cầu của chương trình. Những hành động như vậy làm gia tăng bất công. Việc học khu không thể cung cấp thêm một giáo viên toàn thời gian có tác động trực tiếp đến khả năng của PPS trong việc đạt được các mục tiêu trong kế hoạch cải thiện liên tục trường học SCIP của riêng mình. Học sinh nói tiếng Việt và gia đình của các em đang bị gạt ra ngoài một cách có hệ thống bởi các quyết định về nhân sự và chính sách mà các chương trình hoặc trường học khác sẽ không chấp nhận. Tình hình hiện tại là không thể chấp nhận được và không phù hợp với sứ mệnh, giá trị, và nghĩa vụ pháp lý của học khu theo điều số 6 và khuôn khổ công bằng của PPS. Cộng đồng người Việt từ lâu đã là một phần quan trọng trong sự đa dạng của Portland. Thật không thể chấp nhận được khi chính chương trình vốn được thiết kế để hỗ trợ trẻ em.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Carson, C-A-R-S-O-N. And my son Anthony is a junior at McDaniel High School in one of the three intensive skills classrooms. In the, yeah, well, he doesn't like when we talk about school when we're not there. But anyways, so, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for focusing on special education in this committee meeting, the first one of the year, and to dedicate the entire committee meeting to the issue. That sends a really, a message that we families and I think staff really appreciate. So thank you. Also want to recognize the positive changes that have not gone unnoticed. Dr. Charles, we're happy you're here. And Dr. and Jay, we're happy you're here too. But I do have noticed positive changes in communication and actually listening and responding to what families have said. But quickly, I did want to share Anthony's teacher had shared. I asked her, what is the, what should we focus on? We have two minutes. Now I have about one minute. And she shared that the biggest issue facing intensive skills classes in general is the recruitment, recruitment, training, and retaining of good paraprofessionals. I know you know this, but I want to reiterate it just so you hear it. Without good paras, she says, we can't even meet the basic needs of our classroom, such as feeding, toileting, and keeping kids safe. You know, they can't go do anything beyond that or just do the bare minimum. They can't do enrichment activities such as field trips, vocational training, without that strong para support. They have a frequent issue in Anthony's class of being understaffed, either because not all the spots have been filled or staff are out and there's no substitute that came in, and then they're just left carrying the load. And the classroom's over the cap this year, so their staffing ratios are off. But they're just having to deal with it. Nobody's reached out, nobody even probably knows. They just have to, you know, do what they can and figure it out. And so I think we can retain paraprofessionals by training them well and paying them. I understand there's no money, but I'd like to hear tonight and going forward, what ideas do you have? Anything new that you're hoping to try, anything creative? Paraprofessionals are just so important, and we need good paras. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Sarah Schultz? And that concludes public comment. Thank you all for taking the time to come and comment. All right. Today's meeting focus is on special education services here at PPS. Dr. Christina Howard. Someday, Dr. Christina Howard, Senior Chief of Teaching and Learning, will begin tonight's update.
Thank you for having us tonight. And tonight I'm joined by Dr. Kelly Charles, who is our Senior Director over Special Education, and Chief Buno, who is our Chief of Student Support Services. During tonight's presentation, they're going to give an overview of special education program. They're also going to talk about the supports that are available for students receiving special education services. They're going to give a little glimpse into special education funding. I know they shared, I know Chief Buno shared that a bit last year as well. But we also have new members and new updates to share. And then I appreciate the testimony a few minutes ago around how they're listening, have been listening, and how moving from listening to action and sharing a bit about what was learned over the last year and how that's being implemented. So I'm going to turn it over to, I believe, Chief Buno first.
Yeah, thank you. I feel like I got scooted in. So, good evening. It's odd to be here and not there. But Dr. Charles and I appreciate the opportunity to engage in the conversation related to special education, our program right now, and where we are going. I'll move this over here so it picks me up as I'm looking at you.
No, this is kind of an odd setup. Are you okay?
No, I'm fine. I just want to make it work for everyone. Chair, that would be, no. No worries. So as we move forward, I guess Dr. Charles is recovering her voice, and so I'll be doing a lot of the speaking, and she'll have an opportunity to chime in when we have some questions. So anyway, just wanted folks to know where we're at with that. But our, so our hope today, as Christina, I identified Chief Howard, Senior Chief Howard identified, we intend to talk about where we are with our special education program, how we provide services to students, how we're funded, and then, and then what we're doing as a result of listening that we've done over the course of the past, since last January. So it's over six, seven months. So to do that, I want to talk a little bit about what special education is. Just generally, some folks have had an opportunity to hear me talk. Some folks are well-versed, and I know this might be a new topic for others. So in essence, special education was born in 1975, when IDEA was passed in millions, at the time when millions of children were simply excluded from public schools. Even those who did not, who did attend public schools were often segregated and placed into settings outside of the classroom and/or had little access to learning. The passage of IDEA was not just the adoption of a law. It was a civil rights milestone. IDEA guarantees two fundamental rights for students with disabilities. First is a free and appropriate public education. And second is services in the least restrictive environment. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means shortly. The third thing that IDEA outlines is procedural safeguards for students and families as to how special education is implemented. So this law fundamentally changed the game and mandated how special educations or service and services are provided. And it identified that special education isn't a place. Special education is services that we provide and how we go about doing it. So every state has laws that mirror IDEA and more specifically define process. And of course, that's the case with Oregon. So in Portland, we are committed, and we're clear about this, to eradicating ableism in all of its forms. Ableism is the pervasive belief that students with disabilities are inherently less capable or less valuable than their peers. So we recognize that ableism shows up in our system currently when students are separated instead of included, when adults lower expectations for students with disabilities, and critically, when our systems are designed for adult convenience and not student belonging. So our path forward has to interrupt this. And so I'll talk a little bit about how we're doing that or working to do that. Before I do that, though, I can't tell a story of special education without talking about kids. And these are students, the students I might talk about are students that we serve currently. These are PPS students. These are in PPS classrooms, these pictures. And yes, we have permissions from the families to share the photos and talk about their young people. So the first student is a second grader. Well, the time of this photo is a second grader, a bit older than that. He's a bright, curious, and fun-loving young person. And in addition to that, not only is he eligible for special education, but he also is eligible for tag services. This young man experiences intense emotions. It can lead to challenging behavior. What I mean by that, I mean this is a student who demonstrates behavior escalations to the point where classrooms, at the time when he initially started becoming involved with special education, were shut down. We had room clears occurred, and it disrupted the entire environment. At the same time, like I said, he's gifted and talented. So significantly academically capable, but struggles with his emotions and how those are displayed. The dedicated educators at his schools worked with him every single day, every minute, every hour, to put a plan in place to help him be successful. They worked with his family, they worked with community partners, and they collaborated on what a successful plan looks like. And the team was adamant through this process that even though that this was the reality for the student and in a typical IEP determining process, we would identify that this child needed a specialized program that might be delivered somewhere else. But the team, the family, and the educators in the building were adamant this student wasn't going to be served anywhere else except for in his neighborhood. And so they designed a program focused on service and instruction to help enable him to be successful. The team wrapped around him and every other child in the school and the school community to ensure his success. And he continues to receive special education services at that school today as a member of his school community. The second young person on my right, left up there, and right down there is a fourth grader. She's visually impaired. In addition to that, has other physical and medical issues. Her needs are really complex. She requires assistive technology to engage with the world around her. In addition to that, adults to help fulfill her basic need requirements. She is a member of the fourth-grade classroom. She has served in that classroom all day. She receives specialized supports from special educators at the school. In addition to that, she is served by a program that we supervise in Portland Public Schools, which is called Columbia Regional Inclusive Services. And what they do is they provide some of the low-incidence needs related to assistive technology and visual supports. But the service and the direct support every single day comes from the special educators at her school. And so this young lady is a member of the fourth-grade classroom, a member of the community, and has all of her needs met in an inclusive setting. And so I tell you these stories, and there are many, many more I could have picked that are occurring across our system right now to help understand what, first of all, what special education does, but then in addition to that, where we're going and what we want to have happen across the system to serve students that receive special education services. So the students and staff where, work hard to ensure this happens. Both students and staff work very hard to ensure this happens. And where this isn't occurring right now, this is where we're going. So the work of special education is very and deeply personal and intentional. And our staff across the system work very hard to help support the needs of students. So what is special education? I talked about where it came from. What is it? Special education itself is especially designed instruction to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. The instruction is designed to enable access to the core curriculum. These are, these, this is what special education is defined in Oregon State law and in IDEA as. The key legal requirement is the concept of least restrictive environment, which is what I mentioned before was the foundation or was adopted in IDEA. And what least restrictive environment means is special classes or separate schooling must occur only if the nature and severity of the disability is such that student cannot be educated in regular classes, even with supplementary aids and services. Every child must be educated in the school he or she would attend if they would not have a disability to the maximum extent appropriate. So these are, I just specifically quoted Oregon State law related to what least restrictive environment is for special education. So a little bit about inclusion. You'll hear me talk a lot about inclusion. You'll hear special educators, you'll hear families, you'll hear community members talk about inclusion and inclusive practices. So as I just identified, inclusion is, it's foundational or fundamentally a component of IDEA. And so what that means, though, is that special education isn't the driver of inclusion. Inclusion is a general education initiative. While the shift to supporting and moving into our concept of this concept of neighborhood schools directly impacts students with disabilities, this is fundamentally an effort for all students, so not just students with disabilities. So when we intentionally meet the instructional needs of our students furthest from educational justice within the general education classroom or the grade-level classroom, the entire system moves forward, and we build a stronger, more capable community, and we improve the quality of instruction for every single student. It's about making our general education spaces accessible to students with disabilities and to provide instruction by our highly skilled general education teachers in addition to the services and supports that our special educators provide. So what I just identified related to inclusive practices is supported by over 30 years of research in special education. It is, it is so established that this is the most effective way to support students and support their needs in following, every day, but then in addition to that, following high school and on into adulthood, that, you know, you don't say this, but it's like, it's a law. It's been established through research so much that it's just known to meet the needs of all students, increase academic achievement, and address sense of belonging. So the neighborhood schools model was born out of this focus. And currently, we serve 17% of our students in special education. Additionally, currently disproportionately, students served in specialized placements are, represent students of color. In addition to that, the students that we support in special education, even though a majority of them or 80% of them spend 80% of their day in a general education classroom, we aren't, we aren't meeting or performing at a level where we want to with academic performance. Even though we in Portland lead the state, like, so our students with disabilities achieve at higher rates than students across the rest of the state on average, you know. But we're still not at a point where we need to be. And so there's a significant achievement gap and opportunity gap. So these reasons, in addition to the fact that in 2022, 2023, we did listening sessions with our families that received services in a FOCO's classroom. And one, we learned many things, and we're trying to, implementing systems and structures to support how to respond to that. But one of the primary messages that was heard across the system is why are we the only students that are not allowed to attend our community school? And so the neighborhood school process was then born from this focus on inclusion. Students accessing their neighborhood school, students accessing general education environments, and then our families genuinely experiencing segregation that other students don't. So our, the feedback and our focus is about shifting mindsets. It's about every student, especially those with, the students that experience disability, having a sense of belonging within their neighborhood school. And so we have key goals, which is to provide a continuum of supports. And so continuum of special education services, continuum of instruction directly in a child's neighborhood school. We want to foster and create a greater sense of belonging in a stronger community from that to school as a whole in advance collaborative instruction and shared responsibility. So special education is not the deliverer of all of the instruction for students with disabilities. They are first and foremost general education students and need to have access and be provided and participate in general education instruction. And then we are focused on interrupting the system of segregation and ultimately to focus on this concept of rightful presence. And what rightful presence means is it's separate than inclusion. Inclusion has been set up, is that something that somebody has to earn? Rightful presence is you belong here. Everyone belongs. So as we've moved through that, and that being the foundation for neighborhood schools, there's some myths that I want to talk about related to special education, inclusive education, and neighborhood schools. And these myths aren't, it's not Jay up here saying, hey, these are myths. These are as a result of research of these agencies and many, many more. One being US Department of Education, the Herring Center out of the University of Washington, and then some of these organizations, TASH and Inclusive Schools. And then this is also published on the Washington State Department of Education's website. And so I just want to emphasize that the things I'm about to say are not, I just repeat it because it's important, they're not me. This is, this is as a result of research from many agencies and specifically from these folks. So the first is inclusion means all services are delivered in the general education classroom regardless of need. And no, that is, that is not what we talk about. It, we provide services and supports on a continuum. And what that means is, is we will have a designated classroom space and have currently in our neighborhood schools that provide flexible supports and flexible learning needs. And then, and then students are also included, so services are pushed in, and then sometimes students get pulled out. And so the focus, though, or the myth, though, is that inclusion means all in, no matter what. And the reality is, is that is contrary to students, that's contrary to IDEA, that's contrary to students' needs. And we provide the continuum of supports. Second myth, students with behavioral challenges must remain in the general education classroom even with significant disruption. So I told you a story of a child who had significant or very strong emotions, very strong emotional response. And that team included that child, that young person, as much as they were able to. as much as they were able to, in addition to providing services and supports outside of the classroom. They, they identified a plan, they implemented that plan and within weeks had the, the young person functioning in the, in the um general education classroom. So the response is not that ever, it's all or nothing of anything. It, it's that we focus on what services are needed, what skills are need to be taught and how to provide access to the instruction. And some students, that is something that we experience or work on for a long time. And for some students, like I described, you know, it was six months before we were able to have the student um representing the skills they needed within the classroom. Um, inclusion, another thing that gets brought up is that we're doing co-teaching. Um, and co-teaching is a strategy. And what that means is a special education teacher and a general education teacher deliver instruction to the, to the classroom at the same time. Um, but that's not the only way that we're approaching it. So yes, that is included and it's not the only way. Um, inclusion, myth four is inclusion is not for students with severe disabilities. And research actually shows that students with significant or that are significantly impacted by their disability actually show the most benefits from inclusive practices. In addition to that, we have to identi- we have to um provide needs uh outside of the classroom for students also. Um, the, the, the theme though is, is that it's not all or nothing. Um. There's uh another myth that students are provided more direct or more intensive supports when they're removed from the classroom. That i- isn't accurate either. Research has identified that students can be fully ingrate, integrated into a general education classroom and benefit and make the same progress that if they were pulled out. And the last one, I think is the most important because it's something I hear and, and, and read about as I'm looking at comments that it, the inclusive practices or inclusion is more expensive than segregating students into common classrooms. And the reality is, is that's, there is no study, there is no budget analysis that's identified that um segregation or pulling students out is more expensive than inclusive practices. Um, the, the thing that determines cost for special education is the needs of the student. Um, and those are provided um in, in whatever setting it is, so. Um, so I wanted to share a little bit about where we are. As we move forward with this, um in the number of students that we serve in special education. So currently, our, our October first count was seventy-six hundred fourteen kids. Um, which we continue to grow um in, in supporting uh the, in the number of students we support. Um, I, uh, an October first count is never representative of what your overall count would be. And reason for that is, is we have students coming into the system, young students. Um, and sometimes older students who we are identifying, um, because they've not been pre- previously identified. So um in the winter time, uh, which is where the rest of the numbers came from, we will have a, a, a little more accurate count. But we'll continue to grow on until the springtime. Um, and, and, and so what you can see is the needs of students in Portland have continued to grow prior to, since prior to the pandemic and, and, and now. I don't have the district enrollment as of yet, the official district count to give you a percentage. But looking at the numbers, you know, we're, we continue to be in and around seventeen percent of students that we um serve in, in this system in special education. Um, another thing I've shared in the past is um needs that we support. Uh, we, uh, this, this year we've seen a significant grow. This was something I commented on and, and, and gave to the board when, when we met in the springtime. Um, i- i- the, the needs of students are increasing, specifically the needs that are identified on the autism spectrum. Uh, we had a, a pretty large growth actually from uh last year to this year of kids coming into the system. And this is primarily our early childhood students um that are um showing the increase in number. But in addition to that, it's um it's just general need uh across the system and, and, and students coming into Portland. The other data there is where we are across the board uh for special education in the representation of students of color in special education. And then the, what column on the right is the, what that percentage is or what that representation is um in the district. Um, y- you typically would s- see parity. So if the, you know, a category is five point five percent representative, representation across the district, then you're going to see something in and around that for, in, in special education also. Um, when it's not that way, that, or when it's higher in special education or even lower, that's, higher is considered disproportionate. Um, lower is cons- that's where we start to s- ensure that our child find efforts are um doing what they need to do. Start over?
Yeah, because looking, I think probably because we were like looking at that and trying to listen to it at the same time.
So what we, um, so this is the representation of students of color of different demographic groups. The demographic groups are broken out by the federal codes, um, because that's what we have to report to, to the state and the feds i- i- for special education. But um the column on the left is what the representation in special education. So that's one of, you know, the, but it's, it's a percentage. So of the seventy-six hundred students, the column on the right is what the overall enrollment across the district is. So the representation of the um, the, the, the demographic groups across the system. And so what we look for is whether the numbers have parity. So it's in and around the same level of representation in special education as in the whole district. Um, because of course, each one of the students that um are his Latinx, Latino um also represent part of the five point five number. Uh, so we want to make sure there's parity in that. Where there's not parity, where the number in special education is higher, like in that case, then we have a disproportionate representation of Latinx students in special education in our system. So i- now that's a number, it tells us what it is. I'm not saying that, that means that the teams have misidentified the children. Uh, they are very much or very well experienced disability and we need to provide special education services. That's just where we're at and we have to make sure or identify that um we are appropriately identifying them for special education.
Yeah, I understood it. I under- understood, seeing it again was helpful. While we're talking about this for a second anyway, not to interrupt with questions, but just to clarify on this chart. Do you have any thoughts about why our Latino students seem to be particularly um away from that equilibrium? And that's like fourfold almost.
Yeah, um, it, it, so a couple of things, because the number is what it is, we have paid a lot of attention to it. Uh, it, to the point where we even uh review evaluations and evaluation processes to make sure that we have um I identified uh appropriately. So what I can say is, is through, through, through um monitoring, uh, we know that every child that's been identified should be identified, or we believe that they should be identified. Um, and so um it, it, I don't have a, it, it's just the way it is.
And we don't, do we know if that trend holds up in like other districts?
It, it is, districts in the um. So every district experiences disproportionality i- in some way. Um, I think one, the Latinx group in our system is larger than some of the other groups. Um, and I would say that that might not be uncommon for a, a school district to have that. At the same time, we want to be very, we want to make sure that the children we are serving are, should be identified. Um, and most importantly, um, meet the kids' needs, so.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. You really got us at this table.
Yeah.
The um, the disparity in percentage, you know, for the Hispanic population, you know, because many of them are Spanish speaking, right? Um, is that, do you, I don't even know if you know this, but like in the DLI programs, is, is the disparity similar or different?
I, I don't have the information right now or off the top of my head, broken out by school to see if it looks different in, in, in a DLI school versus a non-DLI school. Um, I so, so I, it, I can get that information um for you. I, I do know that we invest um and support our special educators with um supports for evaluating students whose primary language is Spanish or whose first language is Spanish. Um, and so they go through a pretty extensive process of ruling out that language isn't the cause before um they're evaluated. At the same time, I also know that students um who are um fluent or experience their, their first language um t- to a proficient range are success more, significantly more successful um in, in performing in an English setting. Um, so it, that's a really long answer too. I don't have that specific information. And we work hard to uh help support our staff members uh with uh training and resource um to ensure that language isn't the factor when they're identified.
And one of the reasons I ask is because, one of the reasons that DLI programs was founded is because, um, you know, the studies, the evidence shows that when kids can develop in their native languages for longer in their school period, they have less likely chances of negative effects or, or more, more higher rates of success. And I'm just kind of curious because with the disparity, you know, yeah, it would be, it'd be an interesting comparison to see if, you know, the, the language factor is a factor, whether it's on the testing side or the development side, you know, and so it, anyways, yeah. Or even, even perhaps if it is a positive note, more reasons to expand, look into DLI's and, um, and expand it, you know.
Yeah.
Um, I just have a, a curiosity of you. So I, I see that uh for the most part, kids of color are uh overrepresented. Do you think that there's potentially a scenario where white and Asian kids are under, uh, under identified?
Do I, yes, I think that, well, what we would like to see is our numbers have more parity. And so it is um definitely a question that we have. Um, that we, when we're looking at um students um and how we're going about identifying students, so, so it's, it's, there's so many variables that go into this. And yes, that does make us um question whether or not um we have found or it's called child find in special education where we've identified uh any, every potential student that could potentially be experiencing a disability. Um, so.
Can I add to that really quick? Because it's a really great question because one thing's about a lot of Asian cultures, not all, but a lot, and I think it's getting better with the younger generations. But a lot of Asian cultures really like high, you know, mental uh disabilities and issues are something to be, be hidden. Right? And so sometimes parents don't advocate for these things, so that, that's something, yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
And, and every one of our schools uh has a, a student intervention team um as part of their MTSS system and structure. And part of that team's responsibility, that's not the team that goes through and identifies students as eligible for special education, but it is the team that, that um reviews how students are progressing in their learning um in, in the school and, and then provides intervention. So when a student demonstrates some significant behavioral need, like the child I described beforehand, of course, that was the student intervention team that started that process before special education became involved. Um, same is true for academic supports. Uh, that team tracks or is, is focused on ensuring that we're meeting the needs of, of, of the students in the school. And so um through a variety of uh assessments, teacher input, um, and just testing, uh, like the MAP assessment that we, we do, that team tracks progress of kids. And then the interventionists or, um, or other folks provide support. And then if, if need be that students get referred for special education evaluation, if, if they're not responding, just to consider um if that is a disability. And if it is, it doesn't change the need to continue to provide general education instruction that's accessible with high quality materials and then perhaps remedial supports, but then special education on top of that. So in, in our system, so I've talked a lot about in, uh, inclusive practices. I talked about what neighborhood schools are and what the purpose of that is. Um, we also meet the academic and behavioral needs of students in a, in a variety of ways um in our system. Uh, first, what I will say is, is a learning, what we call learning center. Some of these names are um, have been that for a long time. But the, the, the focus of the learning center is, it's not a place, it's, 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 it's teacher actually. And, and their job, uh, and they work very hard diligently to, doing this job is to provide the supplemental instruction to students um as they are also participating in the core instruction. In addition to that, we do have three focused, what we call focused or specialized classrooms. Um, and these are regionally located um i- around our system. It elementary, um, they're not at every school, middle, they, they're not at every middle, I apologize. I don't know if I had sentence made sense. They're not at every elementary school, they're not at every middle school. Most high schools have them. Um, the focus is, but they're called a social emotional skills classroom and the focus of that space is to address um social emotional behavioral needs. Uh, we have community or communication behavior instruction. This is primarily an elementary program and it, it supports students with social communication needs, students. Um, I don't want to say students on the autism spectrum. Of course, most, a lot of the students are included in, in that support. And students on the spectrum may be served in other places also, but the focus is on communication. It's on addressing behavior a- as a result of communication and, and what we call social communication. And then intensive skills instruction, which is um students who's needs are more significant. And, and oftentimes these students will participate in an alternative curriculum to the core curriculum in addition to some access to the core curriculum, so. We do have specialized programming also. So uh for students who, students with disabilities who receive special education services can receive services up until they turn twenty-two, basically. Um, up through their twenty-first year. Um, and those students' needs are um met um in our community transition program. Uh, in addition, that early childhood special education is a program that occurs across Portland Public Schools. Portland Public does not oversee it or provide it. It's, it's part of a um, a regional program that is um supervised uh through uh actually David Douglas School District, but that's, that's not what it's called. Um, but they do operate in, in, in our schools, MECP. Thank you, I literally lost it for a second. Uh, and then um, in, in Portland, we, we have what we identify as a special school, which is a, a therapeutic behavioral focused school. It's called Pioneer School.
It is Pioneer School, just geographically, I'm just curious.
Um, division and it's by Kellogg, like a block out from Kellogg.
Central.
Yeah. Um, or maybe three blocks of, uh, but um then we also, and I talked about this um in reference to the young lady that I described that we provide special education services for. Um, we support and these staff are PPS staff. Uh, the Columbia Regional Inclusive Services Program and that's, that program is focused on low incidence disability. So blind, visually impaired, deaf, deaf and hard of hearing, um traumatic brain injury. Um, and then autism also, but these staff actually work everywhere from Hood River uh to that's way down, way, way down south and Multnomah County. So, uh, but these are PPS staff, there's PPS staff in Hood River supporting students' needs um through the Columbia Regional Inclusive Services. And we also support the Providence Program, so this is a specific program for students that have significant health needs where they're, they're served at the hospital. And we have a PPS special educator going there. Those students are also served at Grant and Mount Tabor um as they transition out. Uh, but those kids come from all over the state. And then of course, we also support in our system, our DART programs or day and residential treatment programs. And, and we do serve students and place students in n- in DART programs and the ones, the, the programs that we support in our system that PPS Special Education provides special education supports for. And then in special education, we have special education teachers and talked a bit about what they do, talked a lot. I've talked a bit about what they do, talked a lot about what they do. In addition to that, we have speech language pathologists who provide communication services and supports. We have school psychologists who provide mental health supports, behavioral supports. They lead a lot of work for the team around intervention. In addition to that, they conduct evaluations or facilitate the evaluation process that some of these other specialists participate in, but this, in the school psych is a major player, a major leader in that. And we have occupational physical therapists, we have qualified mental health providers, we have adapted PE specialists. We provide a, a continuum of medical services and supports. Those are frequently by nurses and or like LPNs. And then of course, we have a, a large number of amazing professional educators who support across every one of these settings, our students. So transition, special education is funded. Well, no, and I'll show you how much, not enough here in a second.
That's why.
So in Oregon, of course, education is come, or education's funded through the state school fund. State school fund is generated through a variety of factors. One of the factors is what's called average daily membership. In addition to that, and I, I talked a bit about that a few months ago when I joined our CFO at the DS. But a student with a disability has an additional weight. So it's, it's ADMW. And that weight is equivalent to, it's like one more. So each student with disability generates two fundings, two ADMs, up to 11%. So, so we're currently at 18, almost 18%, somewhere between 17 and 18%. And so we only receive that weighted funding for 11% of the students. In addition to that, there's federal funding. So IDEA requires that the federal government provides funding for support of special education. That funding is substantially less than what IDEA promised, has been since its inception. And, but we do receive IDEA funding also. And then of course, the student investment account supports significantly special education in addition to other student services. The one thing I haven't talked about yet is called the High Cost Disability Fund. And so this is an allocation, every state has it for students who are, have significant expense. So students in Oregon, it's any student whose program costs over $30,000 a year. And the limit on that pro, that budget is $55 million. Just for perspective, last year we submitted for $60 million in expenses to that fund. So if Portland was the only district funded through the High Cost Disability Fund, we would have eliminated it. Anyway, so this is what I just said in revenue. Now I don't have this school years yet. But our IDEA funds are about 8.9 million. It's a combination of a variety of things, including student count, poverty level. And those are the primary things that, that the money gets determined as allocated. In addition to that, it's the general amount across the system. So the state gets a total and then it divides it up across districts. And so that's why it's not a consistent number. It's because it takes the total number of students in the dis, in the state that are being served. Their, their socioeconomic impacts it, and then they divide that up across the districts. Yep.
Quick question, so the last legislative session, remember was HB 244 something? High disability fund, I think that didn't make it out of committee, right? Is that what happened to it?
It didn't, I, I apologize, I don't exactly know where in the process it, it, it didn't make, get beyond, but it didn't make it to a vote.
And, and that bill was to raise the amount for the high disability?
Correct.
Right.
There was also a bill for the 11% cap. And that bill, I think did make it out of committee, but didn't make it out of ways of needs.
It didn't get, it didn't get on the floor, yeah.
Yeah, because of the budget concerns. I think that's, I think that's right.
Yeah. And just so people have kind of a perspective about that, the cap on 11% and we have 17.2 last year, that's equivalent of 2,300 students not getting funded.
Yeah.
And $18 million it looks like roughly.
So. So we.
Can you, can we, we're doing a little math over here.
Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. So, so with the, I'm looking at your bottom line here. This is what it would look like without the cap?
What the 65 would look like without the cap.
Correct.
Got it, okay. So I was just wondering how that math was working, makes sure I understood it.
I see what you're putting down.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate that.
It's seared into my brain.
So, so that was our federal allocation, 8.9 million last year. The ADMW that we received added up to 65 million. And then 3.2 million of our student SIA dollars of support in special education. The, the high cost disability reimbursement is always a year behind. So, so I, I do not know what we have received yet as a result. And there's a squaring up process that has to occur. But it will be in and around and probably less because every year need increase, costs increase. And as you can see, every year, the amount we have received decreases, even though the number of kids we have submitted has increased. But it's the, it's the, it's the current state of affairs. So, and so here's what expenditures looked like. So overall, last school year, we spent $160 million providing special education services to our students. So you can see the, the difference in the, let's say it's $76 million that we've received. And, and we spent 159.
Can I ask some questions on this? When I looked at it, I had a couple of questions, if that's okay?
No, no problem.
While we're staring at it together. I was just curious if this includes like kids that are in their general education classrooms? If it includes their teachers? Or if this is just the services they get outside of a general education classroom? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so this number is specifically the direct special education expenditure. So the, the personnel, the special educators I was talking about, the certain, the curriculum materials we purchase for, for the delivery of special education, the supplementary services like the nurses. So that, that's this number. This does not count, this does not take into account some of the ADMR related costs that gen ed spends on every child with a disability. So there is a portion of every child with a disability that funds the first grade teacher, the 10th grade teacher.
Just because they're in that classroom, but it's not being counted here.
This is not in this table.
Yeah.
Cause it's hard to.
So like our fourth grade friend who probably has a one-to-one para educator, but is in a fourth grade classroom, that you introduced us to before with high medical needs.
Yep.
Their para is counted here, but the general ed teacher is not.
Perfect.
Thank you. How come transportation costs were so much lower last year?
So that's a great question, thank you for asking. So a couple of things. We have, through the work of our special education department, our AEP teams and, and in transportation in general, we worked really hard to ensure students were transported in the bus and, and not some of the other individualized focus, not because of need, but because of schedule that were being provided. And so in some ways, in, in, in previously, students might have been transported in a cab. And it wasn't because that was a need. It was because the routes could not work to help get the student to the, the school that they were being served at. So, so they, there was a lot of work to help do that. The other thing that we moved forward in this last year is there are many, many expenses that occur in transportation because we transport students. Not because we are transporting students that receive special education services. And so with a shift in leadership, we really delve into, you know, electricity or diesel is something that we spend across the board, it's not a special ed expense. So it's not that the district didn't spend the money, it's not part of the special education cost. So both things happened though. So we made sure that kids were transported as they should be. And then also looked at, why are we charging stuff to special ed that we shouldn't be?
Well, it looks like we, for two years, we're doing something weird maybe too.
Well, I think that coming, our transportation needs, not I think, I know, I, I was here that whole time. Our transportation needs coming out of the pandemic and the availability of bus drivers and, and other things was something that we had to work through. And we have to transport kids who need transportation. And so services were accessed that costed more to help ensure kids got what they needed. Little glimpse at our staffing. I will be the first to say that we need more special education staffing. And we've grown in the, in the number of students we have needed to support and consequently have grown in the number of staffing that we have available. And so these, these numbers are FTE. So there may be more adults because not everybody works full-time. But we continue to grow, from this year to last year. You know, even though the district experienced significant reductions, we were able to maintain staffing in special education. And even grow in some places. For example, you can see almost over 10 FTE for, for some of the groups that we, we needed to expand because of the numbers of kids we needed to serve. And our para educators, who are a huge component of this program, we continue, we have currently around the same amount we had last year, but, but we continue to add more into the system.
I don't see UMHPs on here.
Yeah.
I was just curious where they're, because I know we have a UMHP at our school that just works at special ed kids. So I'm just curious where they're coming.
They're, they're just, they're just not on this chart.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Qualified mental health provider. So as part of the allocations that we provide to our social emotional skills classrooms is a, is a, and in, in some, like a pioneer is, is a qualified mental health provider. And they, they help to support behavioral counseling needs. And so not trying to not include them, there's, we have the same amount we've had for the last couple of years. So moving now, transition, moving into this last year, we started in January, listening sessions across our, our, our system. And what listening session was is Dr. Charles and myself went and met with the special education staff at every building in the district and the building leader. And, and our whole focus was, in essence, what do we need to do to help improve the system and so, and, and, and support for students' disabilities in this district? In addition to that, we have, have, I apologize, I'll finish my sentence. We've had family listening sessions and those started a little bit later in the year. And we continue to do family listening in a variety of ways. Again, the whole broader purpose was direct feedback on how families and staff experience special education in the system to address systemic needs. So through that process, and, and this is the, the, the staff's response. So as, as identified, we do, it's not as the same rate that it used to be, but we struggle with qualified staff. Primarily and the biggest thing is that we heard across the system that is of significant, of significance is the amount of qualified substitute para educators. So even though with additional funding from the state, from the federal government, we need to provide or would like to provide additional special educators. Even with that, with what is already allocated, we have 40 to 30 to 60 special education para educator positions every day unfilled. And it's a huge issue across our system.
What, like 8% or something?
It's, yeah. So we have about 470, I think I have, I, I might have that in a, in a slide.
If you go back a second, we can see how many there are, do the math.
Oh, yeah. 465, yeah.
Thank you, so I think, yeah, that's the math I was attempting to do.
Yeah. Overall, in, in, in the last, since, since, since I've came to Portland in 21, 22, we've averaged about a 35% fill rate for para educators. Substitutes in our, in, in the system. So, and of course, this is overwhelming. When that happens, a building has to figure out how to serve and support students even with absence. And so what does that mean? That means the whole special ed team leaning in. It means perhaps a speech language pathologist who would be otherwise providing speech services leaning in and supporting a student. It means building administration leaning in. Sometimes it means general education resources or multilingual supports leaning in to support students. So it's, it's a big issue. Additionally, of course, and, and, and something that, that I spoke about earlier, but we have increasing complexity of student need in this system. I think the two things combined, not having resources that are otherwise allocated and then increasing student needs really creates a significant strain on the system. And more importantly means that kids aren't getting their needs met. In addition to that, our staff wanted a clear framework for what inclusive practices is and looks like. And, and then of course, there are processes that we use in special education that for a variety of reasons needed clarity for, for staff. Some of which is leadership changes, some of which is new staff. But either way, the system wasn't working and we needed to respond to it. And then of course, and as we heard, professional learning and addressing a system of professional learning, not only for our para educators, but for our, our licensed staff also. Oh, here's some more data on the, the para educator staffing. Para educator substitute fill rates for the last few years. And just like I identified, it ranges anywhere from 23% to, up to 51%, but never much more than that of our, our staff. In addition to that, substitute para educators was the primary focus and the largest, loudest focus. But in addition to that, folks talked about filling licensed positions also. So I just have data on where we are. And things are getting better and it's still an issue. And so on the right, the right it says para educator. So those aren't, those are positions being filled, not substitutes.
And it says that right now?
For 25, 26, this was as of last week. Yeah, now I'm not saying that we don't have substitutes in those positions. I'm not saying we don't have or haven't come up with a strategy to support the absent school psychologists or the SOPs. None of which, I apologize, I'll pause. Every strategy implemented is amazing and it oftentimes results in educators in our system leaning in and providing support. And it means that that is taking away from their capacity to do their work. And kids need to be served, so folks are leaning in.
Can I ask this really quick? Those are vacancies, so that means the FTE for those are allocated for? Okay.
Yep. So. So this is family and parent feedback. So there's a theme that process isn't being followed, IDEA. So I talked about due process and the, in the, in the rights of students and families that receive special education. And so there is, there, the, an overwhelming theme that the district, the staff that represent the district are not following process and that IEPs are not being implemented. And so these, this, these are things that our families and the families that participated in the learning, listening sessions communicated. There is a, there is a, and, and we've heard, we heard it today that the, the substitute issue is, is significant from a family's perspective also. But then just in addition to that, the, the number of qualified. But then just in addition to that, the number of qualified practitioners that are allocated to each building. Families are concerned about low expectations and non-rigorous instruction for our students with disabilities. So as I've talked about, we know that students, our general education for students first and students participated in the core curriculum provided by a general education teacher is going to positively impact and support that students' learning. And yet, we aren't there everywhere. And then in addition to that, that communication and collaboration was, was from buildings, from educators, from the district, was a system that wasn't functioning. So we, as a team, needed to implement some solutions quickly to help support the system. Because as I put on the slide, the system was in a bit of crisis. And of course, that was the whole reason that we went and visited to understand what needed to happen in the system. Because you can sit in the organizational chair about the system, but then you have to get in it to figure out exactly how things are working. And so that's why we did that. And so we did move forward a solution for paraeducator substitutes. And we did that as a result of not just listening to our staff, but then investigated like, how do other districts do this? How do other districts solve this issue, including in Multnomah County, including across the state and outside of the state? And so we put an R F P together and an agency was awarded a contract by you all a couple of weeks ago. But from the district at the district's request to help us solve this problem. Because this is something that we cannot wait for a solution to solve. We have to begin to improve, we have to improve the fill rate for our special educators and paraeducators specifically. So this is just to address paraeducator substitutes, but that's what that focuses. In addition to that, we implemented a weighted caseload model in our neighborhood schools. So I talked a lot about neighborhood schools, what they're doing. Then I went in later to talk about our specialized programming. Well, when every child is being served in the neighborhood school, that means that we have to have a way of allocating staff that's reflective of specialized programming in addition to that neighborhood school. And so we worked with a committee, we, that included our labor partner and special edu, I apologize, and principals and developed a weighted staffing model. And that's what's been used to allocate F T E, both teacher and paraeducator to buildings that are doing the neighborhood school model. Yeah, we're excited about it. We continue to try and ensure as a committee, we'll continue to try and ensure as a committee that we hit it. But we worked hard as a system to try and support something that was different than what has always been done. In addition, we had to, I put in place a system of professional learning. So we put a work group together that, to co-create what that looked like. So an assessment was done of all of our staff to identify what are the needs? And that work group worked on responding to that. And then we've started to deliver that this school year. And we've received positive responses from our staff that something specific, systematic and organized is being delivered. And the reality is, is that's all the result of this work group's work and Dr. Charles's leadership related to that. We had a work group work on standardizing and clarifying our processes. We're going to hear work group a lot from me, believe in co-creation versus doing. And so when I say work group, that means I brought special educators together, brought principals together and special ed administrators to create these processes.
How do you build the work groups? Like, what's your process?
It's really complex. We ask everybody if they want to participate. And folks that wanted to participate, for the most part, actually in every case, in these senses, they participated.
So you have like a nice, like, all special ed staff? And you just wrote them all and see who came?
Dr. Charles has a communication that she sends to special education staff regularly. And it was shared that we were doing that through this process. In some cases, we might have met with a specific group to also include, like, I'm thinking like school psychologists, for example.
I will say that the work groups came specifically from the listening sessions that we had. We kept hearing our staff and administrators talk about their challenges. And after a couple of months, we began to see some of the same themes emerge. And the work groups came out of those conversations.
Thank you so much.
With much of the work happening over the summer.
Do you compensate staff for their time? Great, thank you.
Yes, to make it verbal. No, I just shook my head. So the other thing, and I just mentioned a way in which we're doing that. So the work groups is one way that we're focused on rebuilding trust with staff. Consistently implementing processes is the second way. And then the third way, a third way is the communication and the way in which Dr. Charles is focusing on communication with staff and leaders. And so this is something that we're committed to continuing to do to make sure that not only do people feel responded to, but people feel supported. And so anyway, it's been, it's been a focus. And then the last thing that we began process on and have implemented much for and continue to support is how we're supporting I E Ps and the creation of that. So every child that receives special education services has an I E P. That is what outlines what special education is for that young person. The way in which that I E P is crafted in collaboration with the family dictates how instruction is delivered. And in addition to that, accommodations in a variety of other things. We need to make sure that that is done in collaboration with the family. We need to make sure that process is followed for that. We need to make sure that the annual review is done annually. And that processes connected to the due process of special education are implemented. And so that's been a huge focus for us. In addition to that, when we don't have I E Ps done by their annual dates, when census comes around or when the federal count time comes around, we don't get funded for the students. So we, in addition to all the other things identified, if we're not in compliance, when we have to be for students' disabilities, and by we, I mean the family, the district, but it's the district's responsibility, then that child doesn't, we don't receive federal funding. We still receive the state funding. Anyway, so these are some of the work groups that we were talking about. We did a change of placement work group. We had the whole, the work group work on a procedural manual. We did the professional learning. I talked about the staffing allocation. And then another major theme that didn't need immediate response, but it's something that we'll be working on moving forward is the transitions, grade level transitions. So the feedback primarily was about kindergarten or preschool to kindergarten. But we need to have efficient and effective transitions from fifth grade to sixth grade, from eighth grade to ninth grade. So those work groups will be, they've been communicated and have started, so.
What does change of placement mean?
So an I E P.
What's that?
So, so there's a, special education law outlines that there's a process that has to be followed for an I E P team to make a decision that a child needs a more, what we call a more restrictive program, but for a specialized placement. And that process was not, it wasn't as clear and folks didn't understand it in the way that we needed it to be done in support of the kid and the young person and family's needs.
I have a question. That's okay. So just trying to get a little perspective on kind of the need, because I see the long-term actions. But one of his, one issue obviously is like there's a shortage of special education teachers, right? And that's a nationwide shortage. And I know, also know that, you know, the problem is worse in rural districts. Urban tends to have a higher percentage of the special education teachers. However, I remember from last year, I think it was you bringing up that families with kids that have like especially high needs and things like that tend to move to urban districts. Because there's things like clinics and hospitals and especially like our high-cost disability. And so that's also, we also have a higher share of the percentage. Is, if we're looking at the rate of like, how many more special education percentage-wise versus how many more percentage-wise of students that have needs? Are they, do they kind of, are they matching okay or is it one outpacing the other? You say I'm kind of getting at? I'm just kind of curious about like, is the demand even greater or less compared to say like a rural district?
Oh, yeah, it's.
I mean, you may not even have any clue about that, but.
So I can, I know this. It's not a comment and it's represented in the data for the metropolitan districts that the urban district's representation or number of kids that we serve, including the number of students with high needs, is higher than a rural setting. It's not a case across the board a hundred percent because sometimes there's communities that have a high level of need for one reason or another. But it tends to be that urban districts, and that's reported as true and not just in Portland, but out in East County also, tend to have higher representation for some of the reasons you described. And consequently have and need more special educators to respond to those needs. At the same time, you know, for example, in a rural system, you may have a smaller percentage, but depending upon your system, you may, it may, one or two students' needs may be huge and dominate the needs of the whole system. So it's kind of a different, it's a little bit of a different world. In addition to that, we have improved with the number of special education positions that we have unfilled. And what I mean by that is we continue to get better and better every year. Because one reason is we have partnerships with the local universities on, well, first of all, just doing student, they don't call them student teaching experiences anymore, but student teaching experiences with us. In addition to that, there's incentives right now at one of the local universities for educators to become special educators. And so we are working hard with those folks to do that. In addition to that, for positions like S O Ps, school psychologists, we recruit nationally and have done a good job of filling those positions. And we still have unfilled and we work hard to support that. It doesn't mean that there's not a substitute in place, but not a permanent special educator.
You kind of got, went right to where I was getting at, like in terms of like trying to, because I see those, the long-term actions, those seem like more medium-term. You know, for long-term, we're looking at incentives and growing our own and things like that. Because I know like, for example, many, many, many years ago, I think it's maybe still in practice, but like, for example, there's a shortage of Spanish-speaking teachers. And what P P S did that was really cool was they allowed Spanish-speaking teachers to concurrently teach full-time and get their masters through like a partnership with P S U. And that way it wasn't as big of an economic barrier. You know, for people to, you know, actually go, you know, the normal way is go through a whole master's program first and then start work. But yeah, yeah, so I'm just, I'm just kind of curious about kind of the long-term incentives and programs and creative thinking. I think that's probably going to be necessary to, if we're really going to tackle this.
We are excited to launch a partnership with Portland State University. We'll have our first informational session in a couple of weeks. And these are general education teachers that want to add a special education license. So that's exciting.
I hope it's a good question. I thought you said a really good question. So regarding identification, does that work in two ways? That the district could initiate identification for a child or does the family or caregiver have to initiate identification for a child?
No, that's a, that's a great question. It's.
Thank you.
So it's, it's, yes. So yes, a family can make a referral and makes referrals. We also get referrals from healthcare providers and preschool teachers. But then in addition to that, yes, special education staff or general education staff make referrals.
Is, is there data on how many families who have received evaluations but have been denied services for one reason or another?
Is there data, so?
Or, you know, they don't?
Yes, we know how many families who have been evaluated and determined to not be eligible.
Okay. And I'm asking this only because I could see how the sped cap could unintentionally create a system that would deny services due to lack of funding.
So, no, I appreciate that. So the district is, well, first and foremost, special educators are focused on ensuring that students with disabilities are.
You know that I'm not, you know. This is nothing to do with you guys. Everything to do with creating a system where it's impossible to win.
Correct. I hear you. So special educators are focused on that. Districts are also held accountable though through special education. We are audited frequently to, and an audit includes reviewing I E Ps, reviewing evaluations to ensure, and this audit, the audits are done by O D E, to ensure that we are identifying students where we need to be identifying students regardless of funding. So the thing about special education is, is these services are to be provided regardless of funding, which is why, and I'm not, we need more funding. And, you know, but it's why, I don't remember what the number was, but it's like, we collect seventy-five million, but we spent a hundred and seventy million in the services and needs for students with disabilities. So, so yes, the system, the way the system is set up by the state, by the federal government isn't the most effective or efficient way to support students' disabilities. And our special educators work very hard to ensure that we're identifying the students who have needs. So with Dr. Char, I don't know if you heard the question, but.
Say it for the mic.
In addition to serving the students we serve in the district, we are, through federal funds, we are required also to make sure that services are provided to students who are eligible, who access private schools. And so there is a proportion of the federal money, it's called proportionate shares, that is allocated to support services for students who may also attend private schools. Now, there's a lot of rules around how that's implemented, but the focus is making sure that a child who experiences disability, who receives special education services, is provided them regardless of whether or not they attend a public school. We, we support students in the same way that, not that same way, but also that may be homeschooled. As if they're in our boundary.
I can see how that cap would make it very difficult in terms of like when you're making a decision. It certainly doesn't make it any, any easier.
The caps are issues for us. I E P teams, I don't, I wouldn't be able to tell you that every special educator understands how the A D M, A D M W or C A P works. Because their focus is on what instruction is needed to support. And yes.
Yeah, I just, I don't think there's probably any of us, you know, that are on the board that haven't heard from a family who has believes strongly that their child needs an I E P and is having trouble getting one. So when I see numbers like that, that's, I can see why it is so challenging.
I sent some questions in advance, but I have a couple others too. I think I have four. First, I just want to comment back. I listened to the testimony on the C A P bill and that was one of the things that came up, that it creates a disincentive. So even though I understand why saying so is really hard to do, there was definitely testimony that it created that disincentive. Yeah. So let's see, I'm going to ask my two surprise questions first. And then I'll ask my ones I told Roseanne to tell you about already. I, if you recall, couldn't remember what question I had the other day. And then I told you, I told you behind the scenes. I'm just curious how, like, what's your plan? Oh, thank you so much for coming and sitting this whole time to listen to something that wasn't necessarily what you were here for, but we just want to, yeah, good to know and just thank you. And just thank you for coming. Yeah, it is, and helps explain some of the issues we have with class sizes outside of our special ed programming too, right? Anyway, thank you so much. We hear you and see you. So I just wanted to say quickly, for those watching, some people left the room that were here. I'm curious what your plan is for evaluating how that, using the agency instead of doing in-house para substitute staffing will go? I guess I don't even really care what the plan is right now. I just want you to affirm that you have one.
Correct. Yes. The, the focus of the RFP and, and the contract is that the fill rates increase. And so evaluating what those are and ensuring that we're addressing the needs is, is, will determine whether we continue.
And maybe will you also consider talking to boots on the ground to see how it's feeling for them?
Oh, yeah, I think a commitment that Dr. Charles and I have made. And we, we've demonstrated and the reason why I said we've made is to continue to engage our staff in either addressing procedures or processes or just gathering feedback.
Thank you. I also just wanted to ask a little bit, more of an observation on the weighted caseload model. I have finally gotten around to start visiting schools, which for those who don't know has been a bit of a challenge for me with my work schedule, but I'm, I'm doing it. And one of the things I heard was about, about an awareness that a principal had that they had a thirty-four to one caseload where they had one, a one point oh FTE for thirty-four students, but then noted that there were several other schools that had the same number of FTE for twenty-five. And so I was just curious if you plan on kind of revisiting and rightsizing that to make sure that as we move into that, it actually is indeed fair? Or, or if, like, are you like going to look and see where there's those incidents of where things are out of whack and make adjustments? Or is it just going to be consistent or what's the plan?
Yeah, so, no, thank you for that. Current, right, we are currently in the process right now in, in how we implement staffing allocation in special education and doing rebalancing. And so, yes, we are looking at places where something wasn't what we thought it would be, you know, when we staffed last spring and then, and then we did make some adjustments in August, but the real, but the reality is, is students continue to show up. But the October first count in our agreement, or it's not the October first count, the October count in our agreement is where we look at what the remedy for high caseloads is. And, and that primarily is providing overage to the staff. And at the same time where there's significant disparities, we go through and try to balance things out. Unfortunately, what that means though is staff get reassigned. So we also have to take into consideration what that impact is. And, and, and also the, the makeup of needs that are being served because some of our staff have a caseload of ten. And that's too much. Some of our staff have a caseload of forty and it's doable. So it's not a, and numbers aren't always the response. And it's how we baseline allocate. So based on ratios of staff to, to students, so.
I was specifically, just to be clear, hearing about the number of kids that are general population on IEPs. The resource room teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That was where, and it was funny because the twenty-five person was saying how they had lost FTE and it was so terrible. And I was like, I just heard about thirty-four somewhere else, so. Okay, well, thank you for taking a look at that going forward. And maybe I noticed that Dr. Cardona, who's in the audience, hi, hi, let me talk about you. Did a lot of work with like a flexible pool of fund to deal with issues after the school year started, to deal with, like you had like a flexible pot of money that you were able to use set aside. So maybe a set aside could be a good idea in the future with this new weighted model.
In addition to the set aside that Dr. Cardona facilitates, special education has some set aside too. So, so in response to what you're saying, that that is part of what, what is done. And at some point, that becomes done. And, 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 you know, because of how the overall system is, is staffed, we, we kind of, we reach a limit of FTE that's available.
Right, and then my two questions I sent in advance. So I'm just curious, you mentioned that not, you had a nice catch-all phrase, but you was like an and/or with the, oh gosh, now I can't remember the, the, you had like an overall name for like SEI, SES, social emotional skills, communication behavior, intensive skills instruction. So those classrooms are spread around the district. Not every school has one. And I'm just curious, well, I guess, I'd be curious in the future, I think I've said this before, for the heat map to include which schools have those classrooms that get published so we know where those extra needs are. But part of the reason I want to know that is because of my experience having an SES classroom specifically at our school and seeing how that affects so much beyond the SES classrooms themselves and the staff that are identified for those classes. For example, principals and administrators spend most, most of their time with those kids, not with the general population in those schools. And so I'm just curious how the district supports those schools that have those types of classrooms and provides them with extra support so that they can take care of those kids and also take care of general ed population kids, which in many cases include a large percentage of special ed kids or kids that have yet to be identified as having needs, but don't have support unless you all lean in.
Right. So, yeah, thank you. So first and foremost, the, the special education resources allocated to those schools are, in, in, in each program staff slightly differently. So, for example, a social emotional skills classroom will have a teacher. They'll have paraeducators, they'll have a TIC, which is a therapeutic intervention coach. And then we'll have QMHP. Now, I'm not saying those are all full-time. It depends on the number of, how many classrooms and, 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 and how many students are in the classroom. And so each, each SES classroom, of course, we'll have a teacher and paraeducators and TIC, but the, the QMHP may serve across two classrooms. So that's the primary resource and support of students in the, I think I called it a focused specialized classroom.
Yeah, yeah, it's like focused or specialized.
And, and our, our CB classrooms, our ISC classrooms are staffed slightly differently. And the primary difference is that the QMHP isn't pre-allocated. There's a teacher and a pre-amount of paraeducators that are allocated for a ratio of student, teachers. It's, you, the, it's usually up to thirteen students, depending upon, no, it is in all three of those. So that's the, that's the first primary resource. In addition to that, special education centrally supports specialists, so additional specialists to, to allocate to the building. And by allocate, I don't mean allocate, I mean dispatch to the buildings to provide additional specialist support. So we, for example, for behavioral supports, have a board certified behavioral analyst. We have autism specialists. And then we have teachers on special assignment. Now, I'm not trying to communicate to you that we have, we, we, we could, we would love more of those folks. And at the same time, those, those folks are then out providing additional supports to buildings where they have a, a unique need that arises that the staff at the, that are already allocated to the building don't. So that's the special education allocation for, for buildings, for our focused classrooms. In addition to that, in, in, in our elementary core program guide, there is FTE for administration allocated or administrative support allocated to buildings. You know, probably not where it needs to be. And that, that is for some of the programs, specifically the behavior programs and the CB programs, taken into consideration from the general fund to, to support the functioning of the building. Now, at the same time, because we believe that building leadership need to make decisions as to how to go about providing supports, that, that FTE may be allocated in to do something that is also supportive of those, the, the needs, but may not translate into like a, an assistant principal. Outside of that, of course, every special education, student that receives special education services is gen ed student first. And so there's a school counselor, there's a, there's student service providers that are allocated to buildings on a spectrum. And, and that may be a school counselor, a climate specialist, an interventionist. Some of those are decisions made at the local, at the school level. But those, those right now are what is, is done in support of what, what you're talking about for all students, including students with disabilities.
Okay. And then when you, you and I have talked about another school and my school that I've had issues where those programs get, it's like the programs themselves get dysregulated or like have a lot of issues. Usually it starts with some paraeducator absences. And then that spins out over the course of time. And there's triage that has to happen. Similarly, triage when you have kindergartners that come in and need essentially one-on-one support and don't have the paperwork in place to get that support or to be placed and, or have the proper supports for that kid. So I'm just curious how the district helps schools when they do have, like triage those types of situations when there's either not a plan for a kinder or just, there's some sort of.
Unforeseen need.
Unforeseen need for triage. And we've gone through one of these before. I was on the school board where it took a while to get that triage, but we got it and it really helped. So I'm just curious if that lesson's been learned? Are we, do we have a plan now for when that happens so that it doesn't take quite so long to, to get things back in alignment?
Yeah, and, and, and of course, the, the first response is to support the, the classroom, the specialized classroom. And so some of, some of the things I just described are what we, the folks we would allocate to, to help come in and, and, and put systems and structures in place and support the teacher to do that. So that would be a TOSA, some of our behavior specialists. So then when we're talking about students who may not be eligible yet for special education services or, or maybe not even at all because they don't experience a disability, the response, and so each building, and I talked about this a little bit earlier, has their student intervention team and it's composed of student service providers, but also teachers and, and, and the administrators. They facilitate behavior interventions for the students whose needs are unexpected or, or, or beyond what is just facilitated by classroom management. Then in addition to that, and, and this is something that we expanded last year, it may have been the year before, but last year significantly, and we continue to have this. We have what's called the rapid response team. So that's a centralized group of folks who, when requested by the building, after they, the intervention team has worked to support the student, they, they come out and provide direct support, like additional specialists to help facilitate, you know, addressing the needs of the student. Now, sometimes, you know, the team makes a decision that the student needs to be evaluated for special education. And of course, that puts them into the special education realm of potential supports. And those, that's when we send out some of the, the special education service providers.
My last question I also meant to just kind of throw in there, a comment about the rapidly decreasing number of educational aids that are in like our general ed population over the last several years for schools that either have had cuts for five years straight or schools that had cuts just last year for the first time, but lost a lot of their educational aids at once. There's nobody to step in and provide one-to-one support when you have new students or kindergartners or students who, you know, didn't have behavioral issues and suddenly are requiring classes to be cleared. And so I just will throw that out there as a comment versus a question to spare you. Thanks, everyone. I had a lot of questions on this one.
Yeah, so I, that, well, we hit everything I had in a slide. So happy to answer any additional questions that folks have. Thank you.
I also really appreciate it and I want to give special appreciation to the act of listening and being responsive to what you hear. It's really important and I'm so glad that y'all are doing that work. Thank you. Okay. Well, our next meeting of the Teaching, Learning and Enrollment Committee is scheduled for November thirteenth. The meeting will focus on Jefferson dual assignments and include an update on the community engagement sessions that are scheduled for this month. For public awareness, I'd like to announce that the district is holding five community engagement sessions regarding the Jefferson High School assignment area. Monday, October twentieth at Oakley Green. Thursday, October twenty-third at Harriet Tebbin. Monday, October twenty-seventh at Fabian. Wednesday, October twenty-ninth at Vernon. And Thursday, November fifth, virtual. All engagements will begin at five thirty PM except for Fabian's, which will begin at six. Every family who lives in the Jefferson catchment area should have received an email via Parent Square and more information will be shared with principals to their school communities. You can also find the information on our website, pps.net. As a reminder, we will hear the results of this feedback at our November thirteenth TLE committee. And the whole board will discuss the recommended proposal at the December sixteenth full board work session. We are planning for a board vote in January twenty-twenty-six. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.